Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order at 6:36. Uh, first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Okay, next up, uh, we have Agenda Review. Uh, we do have one amendment. Uh, we are going to discuss a bid to be awarded for a project in Walton. Uh, we'll have to schedule a special meeting in order to award the bid because we didn't have it in, in time to have an, a vote on it tonight. We'll have to build a warrant and then we'll have a special meeting, probably a 10-minute meeting, just enough to, uh, have a quick discussion and a vote. So we'll put that under, I would say, New Business.
That makes sense.
Okay. Item C under New Business. Yes, that's, well, we'll have a discussion about it tonight.
Okay.
For that reason, yep.
Okay, yep.
Chris?
Don.
Is there a place on the agenda where we maybe talk a little bit about the good meeting we had with Mike Ruiz? Is that going to be under what we're going to take and talk about?
Yeah, we could definitely fit that under, uh, Schedule Our Next Retreat because we were planning on using, uh, our next board meeting that we had canceled as a retreat meeting.
Okay.
It's on the, it's on the agenda under Old Business.
Any other amendments? Hearing is being none, uh, we'll move on to Cast Agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes from June 16th. Terry's the first. Second. Steve's the second. Any discussion? Uh, Terry.
Can, can, I just want to add that I think we, Kuret's doing such a great job of getting all this down, especially while we're on film and everything. So I just wanted to kudos to her.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, all those in favor of adopting June 16th minute, or raise your hand? Uh, five, six, motion carries six zero. Next on the agenda is Presentations. First up will be Administration Update. I believe, uh, Dan is the only one we have tonight.
It's you and Dan.
Uh, did everybody get a copy of the admin report? Uh, on there we had the, uh, remote learning. Uh, we started the remote learning and teachers have been reaching out to students. Uh, before they get caught up on some of their fourth quarter work. So I know some of our discussions have been going pretty well. Uh, just kind of cleaning some things up, which has been good. Uh, the other part of the agenda, or the other part of the, um, the doc was, um, just things that have been going on at the school and that, uh, a lot was update from Paul and facilities. Um, and we've, uh, done quite a bit of work over at the Ag Building and cleaned that up quite a bit. Um, the fence is up and some additional gates were put up as well, uh, just to kind of fort some four-wheelers that we're still kind of getting through. Um, and, uh, the platform was built out in the woodchip boiler. I guess there was an oversight on the original plans. They couldn't quite reach, uh, some of the, uh, the air handlers to clean out, uh, so they had to put a platform up there. Uh, that should be all set. And the last part was the, uh, J-Pod, some of the work over in J-Pod. Uh, that's all been, all the tiles have been taken out. They've been redoing the floors. Um, they're still in completion with that work. They're still doing that work. I know the custodians took out all the lockers, which if you've seen the lockers over there in the la, recently, uh, they were in rough shape, uh, a lot of rust and, and such. Uh, but the custodians have taken them over, put them in the Ag Building. They've been, uh, grinding them down, uh, repainting, repainting them, refurbishing them. Um, so, uh, they are ready to go back up. So we're not quite going to put all of them back up because we don't quite need all of those over there. Some will be repurposed over for the Ag Building, uh, so they don't need to buy additional storage or things. So, uh, and they've, uh, started to repaint the halls over there. The custodial staff started that this morning. Um, I know that, um, there was, uh, did you want me to touch upon the, um, the swan piece as well? I know there was some concern about, uh, MVU, uh, housing the swans. Uh, I did, uh, I know that Jay has been working with Jim Massey, uh, and with Paul Gregoire around, uh, that. Um, the part of what, uh, Jim Massey has been planning on doing for a couple of years is starting a, um, a goat cheese operation. Um, we have the equipment. The equipment was purchased for that, uh, last year. And the building, uh, the room as you go inside the Ag Building right around that first classroom, there's actually a classroom right there that can be used for it. Uh, the, our studio staff is also in the process of kind of cleaning that room up, making sure that that's ready to go, uh, to be able to make the cheese. But, uh, there's a local farmer who I believe was an MVU grad who is loaning us three milking goats. Uh, I guess they are a very rare breed of goat, uh, and will be, uh, loaning those to us. Uh, and they were looking to use that pen where the swans were held last year, uh, to put those goats. And again, this is something that's been kind of in operation in the planning for a little while now. So, um, I know there was some concern about us not being able to house those, uh, any longer. Uh, I know there was, uh, some question about whether putting another, uh, shed on the property. Uh, in my conversation with Paul, uh, Paul, uh, is just really apprehensive about opening up our stormwater permit right now because that would have to be refiled with the town of Highgate and with the state and there being additional cost of approximately $2,000 just to open up the permit, uh, and to do that, uh, let alone what the cost of a shed would be along with heating the shed and, uh, such for the swans. So I know there was some concern along that line. Uh, but we did, uh, you may remember, we did hire the extra, uh, the mechanics teacher, um, that we had been hoping to get. We, we thought we had one at the start of last year. That, uh, that person fell through. So we went this year without a mechanics teacher. We were actually able to find a mechanics teacher, uh, who is, we believe is an excellent, excellent hire, uh, because they have a mechanics background, an animal science background, uh, and a general ag natural resources background. Um, and so with that, um, you know, the Ag program is looking to expand a little bit, um, and, and what their offerings are.
Julie?
Yeah.
Uh, I want to thank Dan. I want to thank you for an excellent answer. I'm glad I asked the question. I got caught in the, between the post office and the pharmacy this morning by a local citizen who had read in the Messenger that we were expanding the program. The person wasn't against the expansion and I don't think was against the swan, but it was a question. I don't try to answer those questions. I shot an email to Julie and I thank you. Uh, in fact, I'm really pleased because I now know more about it than I, so, uh, that's great. And I think the whole board. And I hope that works out with the, with the local farmer. But thank you very much for that update.
You're welcome. Um, that's essentially what's going on. Yes, Peter.
Peter, go ahead.
Hey, Dan, thanks for that update. I'm hoping that we can do, uh, like we did last year and get a, uh, a tour of all the changes that were made and, uh, maybe even, uh, go over to the Ag Department again. That was, uh, very, uh, very good.
Uh, they're, they're always willing to show off, uh, what they've got going on. So at any time, if you want to go on over. Um, absolutely. Let me know. And we can set that up closer to the start of the school year, uh, once we, we get, you know, getting closer and, and get some animals there and, uh, just kind of show you what that's going to look like. Um, right now we're, we're moving the, the aqua tank out. Um, we've got another location for that. That's in the room right now where they're looking to do the goat cheese piece, uh, and we can also use that, uh, as a small operate, as a small classroom as well. So, uh, yeah, we're very excited for that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Uh, any other questions or comments?
The only comment I, I only comment, Chris, I think, I really appreciate Dan doing that. I think that's the type of thing sometimes that we get busy and we, we don't ask. We don't hear. So I, I appreciate it because it's, the swans are a big thing in Walton, but that wasn't where this was coming from. But it's nice to know when we expand program that we can share with citizens.
Yep, absolutely. Feel free to, if you ever get a question and, and you need to know some answers, feel free, reach out. Uh, you know, I'll say to any three of us, myself, Jay or Jen, and, and, you know, we'd rather try to answer the question or at least find the answer for you uh, than, than if you guys, uh, you know, not know.
Very good. Uh, okay, uh, next up would be our Superintendent's, uh, report.
All right, I have a written newsletter this time. I wanted to give the folks a break. Um, of course Wendy was an overachiever and she'd get voted in the up date already. I put that into drive for you. Um, I thought it'd be this time, well, one, I wanted to, uh, there was a question about our food service numbers. So I want to share those with you. Um, and I have the results of our parent survey, uh, the family survey that we did. Um, that I want to share with you and, and speak to you, uh, and obviously the public watching, you know, um, where we are with our process. So in your, I had to switch computers. I'm struggling a bit, everybody. So my apologies. Probably have to look at another computer to pull up those numbers. So the document, uh, Justin and Abby, we don't have Franklin. Um, oh, Franklin's not doing summer. Correct? Laura, can you, can you please correct me?
Um, everything's coming from the, the MVU site over for summer.
Franklin kids can take meals, but they have, it's, everything is picked up at MVU. Okay. So our numbers for breakfast and lunch, um, formerly again are picking up during our, um, expanded hours. And we have had a high of 514 people coming and picking up meals. And when I look at these, I add together breakfast and lunch. So 514 meals, 1,020 meals are picked up that day. Correct? That's how we input those numbers?
Yes, 514 of each meal. Yep.
Right. So we had some lower days. The lowest week would have been, uh, the week of the 18th of June. But, um, we've had some pretty steady numbers. Uh, it's not the same as when we're delivering. But we do have some pretty steady numbers of people picking up food and they continue to do that. Before we're going, anything to add?
Uh, no, nothing to add. Um, it's, uh, it's been, seemed to go in pretty well, uh, the, the times that I've been there in the mornings. Uh, you know, there's sometimes there's a steady stream of cars as you get there. There's four or five cars and, um, usually nine, 10 o'clock, it starts to wait a little bit. But, uh, people are really appreciative of the later hours, uh, and I wanted to pass on thank you to you guys, uh, uh, for those later hours because, um, when the break, when you actually see the breakdown, there's quite a few taking advantage of those later hours. And those are people that may not be served, uh, if, if you didn't have those later hours. So, so thanks for agreeing to have those.
Yeah, and there wasn't anything else to do. Um,
Do you happen to have the mic on on both your computers, Julie?
Oh.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry. Uh, maybe it's something.
No, we have one computer on. Um, I just. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think some others need to mute. Not everyone's muted. I think that's where it's coming from.
So just wave at me or put something in the chat if, if you can't hear me.
Yeah, I'm struggling. Uh, it's when you're, when you're talking, I have a really hard time hearing. It's, I really broke up, like a bad connection.
I'm going to blame Robert because I have a loner computer today and so he helped me set it up. So it may be that the mic is not as good. But the other computer, the mic just seemed to die right before the meeting. So it's all or nothing, I guess.
It seems better now.
A little bit better for me, yeah. Okay, let's see. What I want to do is share with you the survey results. Um, so I'm going to share on the screen. Somehow. Hold on. I don't have the right thing open. I suppose I can do it this way. My apologies. Best laid plans. So I'm going to do a tab. See if this is it. No.
Yeah. It's there.
That'll work. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to start with the fact that we had, we have over 1,800 students in our district and we had over 900 responses. So we had a very good response rate. Um, I put out the survey to folks while I was in another meeting and the other people were being boring for a while. So I sent it out and then I paid attention to the meeting that I was zooming on and, uh, I looked over again. We already had 200 responses. I mean, people were just responding instantly. It was wonderful. We had a couple of bumps and we addressed those and we were sure the link was widely shared. I feel really good about these results. And it's just very important that we, um, have the input from the families. Uh, we had a task force meeting today, uh, not a task force, excuse me, steering committee meeting today that has our entire administrative team. It had, uh, union president, uh, teachers, uh, parents, um, facility folks. Then our nurse, who is our lead nurse for the COVID-19 response, um, and it was a very, you know, long and challenging meeting. But the survey results really were informative. Uh, and then we have, as I described to you before, we have task teams that are then taking different aspects of the planning and these results will inform that work. So I really want to thank the families that took the time to respond because if you had multiple children, it was really important to fill out the survey a second time, you know, for each child you have in school. So we had a good number of responding, uh, from all of our. The survey.
Can I, I get you to pause for a second?
Of course.
Steve, can you might, uh, mute your mic? I think that's where our feedback's coming from. Perfect. All right. Let's try that. Thank you, Steve.
No problem. So we had a good representation of families from each town, uh, in MVU. And we, um, specifically targeted the questions so that if my child attends MVU, I went to the set of questions that, uh, were for MVU students and the same with Swan and Highgate and Franklin. That's why it was important to break things out by school. So I compiled these results, um, together so that you could see, you could compare. Um, the first one is really just, uh, what grade your child will be entering in the fall. Our second survey question was really to get a pulse on the community and their comfort level for students returning to in-person instruction in the fall. Um, each school district, uh, pardon me, each school, um, you know, you can really see differences between the level of comfort. So we had, um, people who are extremely comfortable, very comfortable, moderately comfortable, somewhat comfortable. And then that purple right in here is not at all comfortable. So this really informs the principals and the task teams about folks that are really concerned about going back to school and the differences in each community where that is. Um, I think that was really good. But you also see that the majority of people are comfortable and they want school, uh, for the students. We also asked the question about if we have to do a hybrid model, meaning there's no vaccine. We are being held to strict guidelines that say we really just can't have all our kids in the building at the same time. Uh, and if that's the case, then would you prefer, you know, oh, sorry, this, this one is, that's the next question. Um, this one really is, if you had a choice as a parent, would you want your child to be fully remote, which is the red? Would you want your child to be in school full-time in person? That's the blue. Or would you be, uh, choosing a hybrid? So my children are in school a little bit and they're learning remotely part-time. So you can see there's still a chunk of people that are hoping for a full remote option, as much as 20%. And I think that's very informative. We've certainly heard from a number of parents that say they want that option. Um, that's not necessarily something that the laws currently allow for. Uh, the state folks are working. The State Board of Education is having conversations. Secretary of Ed is trying to address some statutory concerns to make it a possibility. Or, uh, a state of emergency allowed us to be fully remote. Um, but, uh, at this, it's not a straightforward option right now. Uh, we also, also have to figure out how to staff that. But it's very important to realize that there's a significant chunk of folks that are saying they're not necessarily comfortable. They would prefer remote. So here's where we asked about the hybrid. If, if we have to do a hybrid model, if we have to have kids in school part-time, would you prefer an A-day, B-day, I'm in school Monday and Friday and remote Tuesday and Thursday kind of model? Or would you be looking for a half-day, I'm in school in the morning or the afternoon? And it was very overwhelming that families want whatever the option, they want all day. We also asked about transportation. You know, the guidelines for transportation, transportation, um, involve a health screening at the bus stop or at the door of the bus. And, uh, seating will be assigned. Children will be wearing masks. Uh, we are being encouraged to ask families to transport their children if possible, to lighten the load on buses. Uh, and then the buses will have to be sanitized and cleaned between each route. So you can see here, we asked, uh, obviously this is a general question. We'd need to be more specific with families when we're planning routes. But you can see that 50% of families or 40% of families are saying that they would be happy to drive and transport their child themselves. A good chunk of people are still going to be relying on the bus. And you know what? There is a large group there that's a swing group of, you know, they're not sure. We, they don't know what the criteria is. They're, they're waiting to see. So we also asked, and this is compiled from all the schools, this part, we asked about the feedback. What were the challenges, um, from parents, um, in remote learning? So obviously students and families missed the social connection of school. Parents found that there were a lot of distractions at home. It was difficult to keep a work schedule, uh, for families that balance between working from home and helping students with their own work. Families talked about difficulty interpreting and supporting the lessons in some cases. Just generally having kids home from school and childcare was a challenge. Uh, some noted difficulty with the learning platform and the technology itself. And, uh, 20% of people said, you know, the internet, I've got internet, but you, you know, it's not that great. Uh, and so people were still struggling. I think we all have found that to be the case. Because there's not been the kind of demand on our bandwidth, uh, like we've been seeing in the past several months. Um, some folks said that workspace for children was a challenge and then the other, other and none was really negligible. We did ask about the positive parts of remote learning for children. Um, and we had, you know, easy access to coursework, plenty of time to complete activities. Um, classes set up were easy and the same. Clear understanding of the activities and the expectations daily. The learning formats were appealing. Teachers available to answer questions, um, not having to be at school. Some folks even said that that was helpful for their children, uh, for some, to some degree. It was a smaller percentage, but it was there. When we talk about the challenges, some of the things that were positive for some folks were negatives for others depending on their experience, but that also informs us. Some folks cited unclear expectations, um, struggles with the internet, not enough time to complete activities. Those were very small numbers. Uh, work assigned varied class to class, not able to access all the resources easily. But the biggest ones by far were people miss learning at school, people missed school activities, people missed teachers and staff. Those were the big ones. And what's the most important thing to you in a virtual learning environment? That my child feels supported, that my child is interested and engaged, that new material is introduced in a way that hooks my child and that there's enough work to keep my child engaged. Those were the big ones. We also asked for comments and an open-ended thing and there were so many that you can't even put them all in a spreadsheet, which was great. Um, and we do have tho, those answers for folks, but I sort of clumped them into some big themes. Uh, a lot of people have concerns over children wearing masks. They, they worry about it. They're not sure if their child will be successful wearing a mask. People have feelings about wearing masks generally. Um, that is going to be a requirement. It's not a school-by-school decision. It's a state requirement that all faculty, staff, contracted employees and students will wear a mask. Um, so, you know, there may be individual teams or individual children who have significant needs that they can't wear a mask. We'll work through all that. But, you know, there were a lot of folks who cited that. Um, definite concerns about communication from the school and the district. There were people who were pleased with the amount of communication and there were people who felt they needed more. Um, so we need to make sure we have a strong communication plan. There were concerns over an urgent need to get children back in school. That was very frequently referenced. There are concerns about inequity, uh, about remote learning that we need to improve it, um, from school to school, teacher to teacher. People worrying about safety. You have folks who are on the side of, you know, I'm not worried at all. And I want my child in school right away to, I'm very worried about the safety of my child. So it ran a whole gamut. Um, and, uh, people are generally worried about children being able to follow the directions. Um, and as I mentioned before, there's a desire by probably about 10% of folks that they want an option for remote learning, should they want that opportunity themselves and the ability to choose remote learning. And we have a lot more work and guidance from the state, uh, before we can make that opportunity, um, you know, that we can offer that. But we are planning for the eventuality. So that is the information that we got. Um, it was very helpful. And, you know, again, I can't say enough about the quick response, uh, and the support from the community and getting that information. We will survey families more, um, with some more specific information. We'll try and streamline that so that families aren't getting a survey a day, right? A survey about the bus and a survey about, who knows what, but we want to keep that to a minimum. I don't know if you have any questions about that survey information before I have a couple of other things I want to make sure I share.
Okay, looks good to go.
So I said that we had our first meeting today. Um, some of the other things that we are planning on doing as a region, superintendents have in Franklin and Grand Isle County are going to work with Dr. Brina Holmes, who is the head, she headed up the Health and Safety, Healthy and Safe Start reopening task force, um, and some other area pediatricians that are respected in our community. Uh, we'll have some other folks as well. And Channel, uh, 15 Northwest Public Access has said that they will tape for us. We have to work out the details of how we want to do it, but it was important to us that we have doctors that families trust explain the importance of. explain the importance of the things we're doing and what we're asking. So we can then, you know, collaborate on that as a region and then push that out to all of our schools and families on websites and Facebook and wherever it needs to go. I think that's really important. And yes, I think, I think that's it. We're working on communication plans. And there's a lot of work to do. You're going to spend the next several weeks meeting in small groups and then coming together as a larger group multiple times a week.
Julie?
Yes.
Maybe this is more curiosity and maybe I don't need to know, but is Dr. Chip involved?
Um, I have, we have not reached out to him. We have some other, we have other physicians that have stepped up.
Right, okay. I know that he's kind of semi-retired or whatever, but he certainly has served a lot of the families over the last 30, 40 years.
Absolutely.
Has a lot of credibility.
Yes, we're certainly working with a number of pediatricians to see if they're willing. They're all very busy right now, as we are. But yeah, we are trying to get, you and I could stand up and talk about the importance of wearing a mask in school. It doesn't have the same impact as a trusted pediatrician, right? So I think it's important that we try and do that.
Thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Ah, I see that. Go ahead, Jen.
And this might be a curiosity question too. But in your discussions, what about the families that might not be able to provide masks for their kids? Is, what, is, are we going to be able to do that? Or is that in your discussions?
Oh, absolutely. So we definitely are purchasing masks as well. We have to do that. I mean, families can, you know, look, my child never went to school with a pair of mittens that didn't get lost before they came home. Honest to goodness, I can only imagine that kids are going to lose their masks, drop them outside in the mud when they're playing. You know, even with families who have access to multiple masks that they can wash every day and so forth. We need to have supplied masks for kids to use. And anytime. And honestly, the paper ones are lighter to breathe through. We also talked about face shields. We have more conversations to have about those. Not the same as a face cloth, but we have been given guidance that we can use some. So we're certainly, especially if they come back, they're tight against the head and they come below the chin. You know, so we're looking at a number of options for kids and families.
Good, thank you.
It's not a bad time to mention though, if there's anybody out there watching or anybody who knows people who love sew masks, and a lot of people have been doing that. You know, I'm sure that schools would be happy to take donations of cloth masks that people make. Absolutely would be.
We actually got, we got an offer today. Martha Gagne, business manager in Maple Run, said that there's a group of people, Pam Cross and an organization called St. Albans Face Mask Group that's making thousands of masks right now. And if we buy materials, they'll make masks. They're giving a $2 donation per mask, but it's all donation-based.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of options like that out there. But I guess they're like mask-producing now. It's almost thousands at a time.
Wonderful. So that's all, I mean, right now, honestly, we are struggling with some conflicting information from the state between what's recommended and what's required. And the biggest issue we're facing right now as superintendents and school leaders is the six-foot physical distancing. So we've been told that that's a recommendation and that we don't have to have six feet. But the Health Department is telling us that it is a strong recommendation. So there is, we have a great deal of clarity on that. We do not want to do something that is not safe. We want to follow the recommendations, certainly the requirements to the best of our ability. Putting in a when feasible really is not particularly helpful. If we have to have all of our children six feet apart at all times while wearing masks, there is no way we can physically have all our children in our buildings. So we would then have to have a model of part remote and part in-person. There's just no question. You know, some schools around seem to think they can make it work. They may have smaller enrollment or larger space or, but we've looked at our schools. There's just no real way that we could do that. But if we are able to have kids in masks facing in certain directions, using physical barriers, if we have physical barriers, we don't need kids to be six feet apart. So there are a lot of those things that we're working through right now. They're very, they're, they're sort of the cornerstone. So right now, our teams are literally planning for Scenario A, Scenario B, Scenario C. So, and we need to be nimble and go with whatever the guidelines and the final determinations are about what's the safest thing for our students. We've got to balance the fact that we want our kids in our buildings. Having kids in person, having kids in school five days a week would be all of our preference. And that's what we're trying to do. But, you know, I, I think it's fair to share with the board that that, that is our biggest stumbling block, concern, area for clarification that we're facing right now.
Terry.
I had a question. And I don't know if you know this or not, but if we can't be six feet apart, do we have an estimate for how many feet we could be apart? Like, is there three feet or something like that? I'm just curious what our buildings would hold.
You are right on the nose with that question. On the 25th, we had a presentation by Dr. Brina Holmes with the task force and Dan French. And it really sounded, on the 25th, all the superintendents were in this meeting. It sounded as if, you know, you could have, you could do four feet, you could do three feet, you could be flexible if you had other things in place. And we're not necessarily hearing that same information a week and a half later. So we want to do, we want to do the right thing. I, I do not envy any of these people at the state level giving us this guidance. I absolutely do not. It's a very difficult thing for us to navigate. But as superintendents, we're very concerned that we do the right thing, right? We don't want, there's, there's, we want there to be a safe, reliable environment for our students and our teachers. And, you know, we don't want to go against something that is a strong recommendation. So we are wrestling with that. But, you know, our goal, our priority, we would love to have all the kids in school, have plexiglass between all of our kids, have them sitting closer together and be able to make that work. And have kids in school every day. That would be what we would love to do. But we're not sure. We may not even be able to get the plexiglass, right? So we, there's, there's a lot of, it's not just, you know, Julie just decides, oh, this would be best, right? There's a great deal of pros and cons and weighing of, of, I don't, weighing of the risks of kids being together, the adults being together. We have, you know, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Julie. We'll move on to new business. First up, we'll, we'll need a motion. It's for our food service meal pricing. We do this every year. We have to set a price. Laura will explain a lot more than I can.
So the board is already over-insetting the hot lunch price for our programs. But the state of Vermont does require us to run a paid lunch equity tool, which looks at prices and the increases over the past few years and make sure that we are not subsidizing our paid meal pricing, paid meal lunches with the subsidies we receive from the state and federal government. And so this year, we ran the calculation with the paid lunch equity tool and were required in most of our schools to increase the 10 cents. Some, it was a little bit more than that, but, or less than that, excuse me. But I think if we just continue towards 10 cents each year, then we will eventually catch up with the, the target price, which the state also provides for us each year based on kind of the average lunch price. And that's 309 right now. So I'm recommending, based on those tools and that calculation that we set the meal price for, where's my, um, the elementary schools will go from $2.65 to $2.75. And the high school would go from $2.95 to $3.05. And their, their high school is always higher. And that's just because their off, their meal pattern requirements based on the USDA, USDA regulations are bigger and more intensive. And we offer more options at the high school level, for sure, as part of the program.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to set the elementary prices at 2.75 and the high school price at $3.05.
Chris and Laura, how close are we to the target? You said over time, we might get to the target?
It's, 309 is the target right now. Unfortunately, the target, just like, you know, standards of education, the target keeps coming up also. But, but we're gaining on it. The, the maximum requirement is 10 cents a year. So, I mean, we could set it higher than that. We could go right to the target. That's the board's prerogative. But we always are fearful that if we increase our prices too much, then participation goes down and then you're, you're not cash flow on your program as well. So we've been sticking with the 10 cents.
Thank you for the information.
Jen.
Laura, do you feel like there might be some concern? Because you just made the comment that participation would go down, so it won't even out the pricing. Do you have any concern that this year, a lot more people might be doing, bringing their students, bringing their lunches because of the situation? And that's going to hurt us even more?
It can. And I am concerned about that. I mean, our free and reduced price percentages, I think those students will still eat our, our, our meals that we provide. And that's, you know, between 40 to 50% in all of our schools. But yes, I think there will be people who pack lunches rather than take advantage of, of what we're offering. We, we moved our food service management contract as we were required to by, from the state, from a cost reimbursable contract to actually a fixed-price contract. So we're paying like a per-meal price with, with our food service management company now. To be honest, now in this situation, I'm really happy about that. I wasn't a fan of it before. But right now, we'll only pay for the meals that they're providing. So it, it may save us this coming year. It's just, when we originally were doing that, we didn't know what was a good price per fixed-price meal. But I think this year, it might help us because we'll only pay for what they're serving. The food service management companies might struggle. But we're locked in at our price that we have, so.
Thank you. Makes me feel better, knowing that it's going to be only near.
And I, I did, we were starting our discussion with the food service management company and the Franklin Hot Lunch Program too. And, you know, Chris and I spoke about this a little bit, but quality, obviously, you know, it's a management company, it's a service contract. So we always want to look for the best quality we can get for the amount that we're paying. And so, you know, we continue to try to provide a quality product so that participation does be as high as it, as it can be. And those, we're, we were talking about that with the AVI as early as today for the upcoming year.
So once again, I'll entertain a motion to set our food prices for the elementary schools at 2.75 and the high school at 3.05. Terry's the first. Second, Jen, second. Discussion. Peter.
So what are our options? Can, can we not raise it? Is that an option or we are mandated to raise it?
We're mandated to run the calculation. The board can set that rate at anything you want, but you have to make sure that you would be able to subsidize the program if the, if the paid lunch price was not set at such that you were subsidizing with federal or state dollars. So if we couldn't cash, basically if the paid lunches don't cover the cost of those lunches, you can't use that money to subsidize. So you would have to have an outside funding source, grants, general funds. Some people, some school districts do subsidize with general fund dollars. We have never done that other than with the Franklin Food Service Program. We do subsidize benefits for the food service staff there for that in-house program. But that's the only thing we've ever subsidized since I, I think in the history of our school district. But you did, you're prerogative. You could set that price at anything you want.
So the, the paid lunches are paying for the non-paid lunches?
You, they can't. The free and reduced has to sort of cash flow on its own and the paid lunches kind of have to cash flow on their, on their own. We have to prove that none of those subsidy dollars are being used. I mean, that's a better way to say it, to subsidize people that are paying a full, a full cost.
Okay.
Paid meal price is 3.05. We have to make sure that that 3.05 covers the cost of that meal being prepared. And we're not using any of the federal and state dollars to do that. Does that make more sense, probably?
It does, but how, do we know what the cost is of the, of a meal?
Um, I, I, I can go look if you want. It's in my files over there. I don't know it off the top of my head, what our fixed plate cost is. But yes, I can tell you that 3.05 covers it. I just don't know it off the top of my head. And the 2.75. There's, there's a financial report that we have to file with the state of Vermont and the Child Nutrition Program a few times a year, ensuring that that's not happening. Makes sense.
Terry.
Yeah, one of the things I remember when we've had this discussion before, when we were at Swanton, I remember you saying that we're not making money off it. But if we charge enough that over the years, enough gets accumulated to pay for like the freezer repairs and things, the, the logistical costs. Is that, yeah, okay. So that makes sense.
Happens. Happens. The money that you make off of a hot lunch program stays with the program. It's a separate bank account. You can't go mingle it with general fund dollars. And it can only be used for wellness, nutrition in that hot lunch program, certain, certain content areas. I can tell you that we are not making as much money with the paid flat uh, meal fixed price. Um, as we were when we were um, cost reimbursable, but I think this year that may be the opposite of where we would have ended up. Yeah. Our programs have, have money right now. We've used some to invest in equipment. Um, I brought a couple of things to you guys this year. But um, unfortunately, we are kind of slowly eating away at those carryovers that were developed over multiple years.
Any other questions? So I guess we're ready to vote. Uh, all those in favor of setting uh, food service prices? Two seventy-five for elementary, three oh five for the high school, raise your hand. Uh, Peter, I can't see you, so I'm not sure what your vote is.
I, I'm four. I'm good.
Okay, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. So next up, uh, an update on uh, the SRO positions and the next steps. Julie? Julia, you're muted.
I'm muted. Thank you. As you know, we've been having conversations with Swanton PD. They've uh, applied for some grants to uh, um, replace somebody who may be retiring shortly and add a position uh, of an SRO community police officer in our community. Um, I am inviting Chief Stell to come to our first August board meeting to speak with the board. And we'd like to have a decision in August if possible. Um, there, the grant process would begin in October. Um, should the board approve. Um, it has been in the press a little bit, um, because of the Black Lives Matter and the movement to defund the police. Um, there was an article in Vermont Digger, really uh, basically Vermont Legal Aid uh, is pushing to have all SROs eliminated in the state of Vermont. Um, and so that there's, I, I wanted to just bring up a couple of miss, pieces of misinformation that Vermont Legal Aid is sharing with the press. Uh, and they also wrote a letter to every superintendent who has school resource officers in their school district. Um, they're essentially tying the role of a school resource officer and connecting that role to discipline in schools. And there, the SRO is really an educational and community and safety planning person. But if student is engaged in misconduct, the SRO does not have a role in that process. That's still a principal and a dean of students and a behavior management and the planning room, that process. We do as a state and as a country have a problem with suspending students of color, students with disabilities and students who are Native American more than we suspend students who identify as white. That has been, uh, there was a big report that the state uh, that Vermont Legal Aid put out called kicked out. I think it was based on two thousand twelve data. Um, and this is a very important issue and it's an important issue that Legal Aid is promoting. They're just drawing a connection to school resource officers that I think is inaccurate and has been represented that way in the press. Um, you know, Dan and Jay do not give their responsibility over to the SRO when it comes to discipline. Now, if there's a substance abuse issue, if there's a significant crime that occurs, they certainly can solve. And I certainly know that many times out in the community, if one of our students is involved in a situation and they know that the student is, is, is a student in our school, they will often call this, the resource officer to find out about that young person and really get, and really improve the interaction with the student rather than uh, so in, in many cases, it's actually a benefit to the relation between the police and our students in our community. The addition of the school resource officer in the elementary school, I don't see that person being involved in discipline at all. You know, we're talking about education, reading stories to children, informing children about substances and alcohol and teaching students about abuse and, and what they're, what to look out for and how to protect themselves. And being involved in our safety planning, you know, just because we have this COVID crisis, we're not throwing out the door. Our safety and um, we still have to do fire drills. We still have to do lockdown drills. We still have to be planning for other emergencies and having a resource officer is an important part of that. So I, I don't know if there are any questions around that, but I know that um, certainly something that's been in the press. And uh, you know, one of the things that is an opportunity for us is because we would be writing new memorandums of understanding with the police department. So we then have an opportunity to draft explicitly what we want the officer to be involved in and what we don't. I think before I throw it out to questions, one of the other things I wanted to, to point out is that the department, the legal aid, they, they want all resource officers gone. But they want schools to, to have mental health professionals in our schools. All our schools have that. We have school psychologists, we have mental health professionals, we have NCASS in our schools. Um, they're also looking for, where is it? They're looking for the end, the end of use suspension and, and really try and have a more positive uh, approach to student behavior. Our school district has just spent a year working on a social emotional learning curriculum so that we can be proactive with students. We are working more toward restorative practices. That's another request that they have. We're, we're moving in that direction. Um, we really want to move from a punitive, I mean, there's times that students need consequences. And we want learning to be occurring in the realm of behavior. So that is a direction that we're already engaged in. Um, so I really believe that um, the investment in mental health and social services request, we're already doing, that um, restorative justice practices are, are in place in one school. And, and we are working on those kinds of things in all of our schools. And the, you know, we have to look at the social emotional learning curriculum having a positive impact on our suspensions of students. We don't want kids to be sent out of school for misbehavior. Um, at all, uh, if possible. So, you know, it's, it's always going to be a tool, but it, it can't be the only tool. And so we are already engaged in that work and I just want to make sure that this board and the community understands that these issues are very important to us and will be considering them in um, should the board want to move ahead with a school resource officer.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions? Terry?
Thank you. Um, thank you for that preface. I just, um, you know, I will say I never even gave thought to half of what people are talking about before. I just thought this SRO officers when we had it. I think I have a great confidence in the way our administrators work, the restorative justice, the consideration that we, that has been going on here for a while. And I also have um, confidence in our police chief. I think he does a really nice job. I think he's proven that and he's shown that about his awareness of, of what could go wrong. I do believe though, as um, as our, a board, I think it's important that we at least look at these issues. And like you said, the MOU, I think it's important that we use it to the best advantage that we can and, and get reports and find out just so that we are more vigilant about some of the stuff that we never really, I never really thought about before. That's all I have to say. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. And I think defund the police, I, I, I think they gotta get their terminology better. But anyway, I think that um, it's, it's good that we're going to have that discussion and that, and that Joey Stell's going to come in and talk to us as well. So thank you for putting it on the agenda and talking about it.
Thank you, Terry. I just think it's really important to address. Um, I'm, I'm gonna meet Chief Stell before our August meeting. Somewhere, we'll have our schedules aligned, um, and uh, really so that he can be prepared. Um, but I just think, you know, it's been getting a lot of press, there are different aspects of, of the state, different areas rather of the state where this is a bigger issue um, than other areas of the state. But you know, we're in the position of trying to add possibly a position. Um, so I wanted to make sure we at least had that discussion. So my expectation is I'll meet with Joey Stell next, uh, in the next few weeks. Um, and that we will come to the August agenda, uh, put on him on the August agenda. I'm stumbling a lot today. It's been a long day. I've been talking all day.
Can, can I ask a follow-up question to that when you talk to him? I would like to, I would like to know, cause when I read those articles, I did find it interesting to talk about different people's perspectives. And I'm, I'm wondering how he does, um, how, what his plans are to take that into account. So that we're not just, you know, some kids are feeling good about it and some kids aren't, you know, or some parents are and some parents aren't, that kind of stuff.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so at this time we'll re, or move on to our agenda amendment item, which was the project in Swanton. Uh, for right now, just be information. Laura?
Okay, so we placed an ad um, uh, in the messenger and um, the local contractors. Based on work with a few of them, um, in early June, um, to uh, renovate a garage, I should say, um, in Swanton. Um, I can redo. Um, I will add this to the drive, but basically it's demolishing the old shed, disconnecting the power, adding an, um, onto the existing garage with a twenty-four by twenty-eight addition. It'll have a four-foot frost wall, finished slab, um, uh, trusses that will match existing trusses, roof will be plywood shingles, um, a nine-by-seven overhead door. August finish date. They think it'll take about three weeks. Obviously they'll be insured and uh, and all of that. Um, he went out to bid and un, unfortunately only one bid was received and that was from Gilmet's Handyman Service. Um, Jason's email to me stated that um, unfortunately they only received one bid from James Gilmet, but the bid submitted was via email and he said in his opinion, it's an excellent bid. It's actually right on target from the initial estimates that he had gotten for the job. He was afraid with no one to bid against, it might be high, but he doesn't, in his opinion, that's not it. Um, he would recommend that you move forward with this bid. And like I said, I'll, I'll put the, the actual document on, in the drive for you. The amount, the amount is uh, thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. I guess that's important. I should mention that.
Just for words of information. Really good, uh, uh, our Gilma is a good carpenter. I've seen his work, does a nice job.
I don't have any, the um, local contractors, Dawn, um, but it was in the messenger. There was a full ad put in the messenger, um, in, in the first week of June. I can put that in the drive. I can put that in the drive. Every RFP that we put out because the board has designated the messenger as their paper goes, goes there.
I'm just surprised if there were some local contractors. I just wondered if uh, if he, if he had contacted some directly that he knew. But that's what we have, that's what we have.
Peter?
Uh, Chris, is, is this? Come to the board before, um, first I've heard about this project. I was just wondering where it came from and uh,
I believe this was in the budget planning, correct Laura? We had talked about this. Or actually Jason had talked about this two years ago.
It's been part of his long-term plan for a while, but that document that I sent that was broken down for capital projects, broken down by kind of short-term, long-term. It, this was um, the red item, his hot, his hot item for fiscal year twenty-one. Um, I will say in working with Julie and administration, we understand this is kind of a volatile, obviously, financial environment we're in right now. So we are not moving on projects that um, we don't feel are, we've asked that we are field, are not necessary. But this was the one that Swanton had prioritized, um, basically the last year.
So they're tearing a building down and putting one up? Are they using it for the same purpose? What's the, what's the purpose of the new building?
I can only speak partially to that. I know that it's a lot of storage, proper storage, so that things are not ruined. I know that their, their newish tractor also gets stored in there. Um, they've had a lot of issues with water damage and, and problems with water in the, in the building that they have, but that's about the extent of my knowledge base there. But I can ask Jason for um, a more specific kind of explanation if that's what you're looking for.
Would, would Jason be able to meet with us? Cause we do plan another meeting to vote on this. It'd be nice to have his uh, input.
That would be the, I, I'm sure he'd be willing to. That would be the board's prerogative, yep.
Uh, the information I have on it is uh, it's, they have a smaller shed now that is uh, deteriorating. Leaks, lots of problems. So they're going to tear that down and uh, add on to the existing garage that they have. Uh, to make it uh, look appropriate and it gives them more storage and it, you know, new building won't leak, that kind of thing. But I also agree with Peter. It would be nice to have Jason. Just so if we have more questions that we think of between now and then, he's much more the expert on it.
Sure you won't mind.
I, I, I agree.
Once we know the date.
On the board when we, oops, I'm sure that is probably outused the usefulness, but in this current environment.
I lost you there, Dawn, for a minute, I.
I think Dawn froze up. We'll give him a minute, see if his connection gets better.
We'll definitely invite Jason. Um, it will, you know, probably it'll be a half hour meeting. Uh, so you know, whatever the board's prerogative is for uh, us to get a forum. Laura, what's the timeframe? Do you'd like to get this done?
As soon as possible, but whenever we can get a date that works for people, um, you know, you know, he wants it done for school, obviously, the end of August. And he wants to line that up if you can move forward.
Well, uh, is there any possibility people could meet uh, for a short meeting Thursday night this week? Dawn's a go. Terry can't. Alright, so this is kind of difficult too, because we're missing some board members, but.
Chris, I, I can do it. I can do it.
Yeah, I, I said you were a go. Terry's the one that can't. Uh, how about a following to a week from today, Tuesday? Terry can, Peter, yes. Joanne, yes. Uh, Jen, yes. And Steve, yes. And I can do it too. So that's definitely a quorum. So we'll plan uh, six thirty. Uh, and what would be the date? Let's see, it'd be the fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
And it should be a short simple, hopefully.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, uh, we're on to old business. First up is check warrants. Steve, are you still not able to talk? Okay, Laura, can you read the?
And Steve, I put in the chat that you have two sessions live right now. I can see an S for Steve and I can also see you. So I think if you ended one of those, your mic might work. Just a thought. I'm happy to read these, but I was just, just an observation. Um, these check warrants are for, are um, for the month of June. Now it's payable one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents. Payroll checks, forty-three thousand sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Payroll other disbursements, one million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. Payroll deductions, one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. All right, for a grand total of three million one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Okay, so at this time I'd entertain a motion to check warrants as read. Terry's the first, uh, Steve second. Any discussion? Uh, seeing, uh, all those in favor of accepting check warrants is read, raise, raise your hand. Uh, Dawn, I didn't get your vote. Okay, motion.
Thumbs up.
Yep. Okay, so next up. Old business, property legal issue. Uh, I would believe we want to go into executive's uh, session for this one. Cause uh, I believe we have some guidance on what our next steps are with that, correct Julie? Uh, Julie, you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, it should be quick. But we would, um, if somebody would make a finding that what belongs in executive session as a confidential legal issue.
Okay, perfect. Uh, at this time, we, uh, next up is uh, schedule board and superintendent goals work session. We had discussed at our retreat that we would meet on the meeting that was, that we had done away with. So it'd be the third Tuesday of July, but we never finalized it. So I'm not sure if that works for people or not.
Will it be remote, virtual?
Uh, board's pleasure.
Only because if all goes well, I'm going to be in Maine that week, so, but it doesn't make a, a lot of difference either way. Go ahead and do it. I thought the meeting was good with Mike and I think we need to keep it.
Uh, and even if we have an in-person meeting, you would still be able to remote log into it. Cause I'm not sure everybody would feel comfortable even if we had an in-person meeting.
No, I think not. And I also think that, you know, at this time, we're not, um, you know, we're not having a consultant and it's not a half day and, you know, it really would just be an opportunity for us to talk about our goals as a board, our goal through the district. And I will uh, come with some goals for myself and share them. as a board, our goal for the district, and I will, uh, come with some goals for myself and share them. Um, you know, if the board's pleasure, whether they want to do that virtually, um, I'm going to put some examples that Mike Dewey shared with me into the folder for the twenty-first. I'll do that next week. Um, and maybe I'll create a little Google Doc where people could brainstorm some of their goals ahead of time. Um, things that they want to work on, you know, we don't have to worry about how they're worded, but, you know, we just, I, I'm concerned about equity. I'm concerned about whatever it is, um, we put those into a document as a starting place.
Terry, of course, thank you. I was wondering, do we have notes? Did, were there notes taken at our last meeting? I didn't even volunteer to take any or anything, sorry.
Well, I have, I recorded it and I put it, I, I put it, oh my, I really have been talking all day. My apologies. I gave Pirat the recording, but I haven't actually had a conversation with Pirat about the fact that we recorded the meeting. I'm going to talk to her about, she's finding out right now, but, uh, I mean, we're having a meeting tomorrow and we're going to talk about that. Uh, yeah, I carried the recording around with me for at least a week, so my apologies to everyone, but that's not actually in minutes yet. But we do have it, absolutely.
Okay, so seeing no other discussion, uh, we will have a meeting, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-first, I believe, of July, and six-thirty, work for everyone? Okay, we'll keep it right on point, six-thirty, virtually. Very good. So now on to other business, uh, line of credit, document signatures.
I sent a follow-up email as well, this is just a reminder, um, thank you to everybody that's come in, Chris, Devin, and Megan. Um, since Devin and Megan aren't here, I just decided to send an email as well, but if you can come in by Friday, or if I can bring them to you somewhere, I'm happy to do that too. Um, but I, I, we do try to get all the board member signatures, and Chris, we left you a line right at the top.
Honestly, since you sent me that email, things have been absolutely insane, but I was planning on going tomorrow, so.
Okay. Just shoot me a text, um, I'll make sure they're.
Laura's after one I signed, I've signed up.
Yes, yep, only Devin, Megan, and Chris left. Yep.
Laura, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, wow. I, I did have to get rid of that other one. Um, I came in and signed that one sheet I missed.
Yes.
There was some confusion as to who needed to sign what.
Yeah, I had to add that sheet for the resolution, it's two pages, I had color coded it, but it was confusing, sorry about that, so.
No, the only, the only issue is I didn't know what color it was. I guess it was red, and I missed one.
I'll do that now.
Well, Chris knows what color he is, and Devin and Megan too, then they'll be able to catch him.
Thank you.
I didn't know I was assigned a color, this is pretty funny. Okay, uh, so at this point, we're on to e-finance transition update.
I'm going to try to be positive. There isn't really much to update, other than I asked for a waiver due to our COVID situation and all the work that I feel like, you know, is the demand on our time and the confusion and the new chart of accounts that we're doing yet again, um, that conversion. They did not allow us a, um, an extension. They said they think we can handle it, so we're in round six, it's going to be a twelve-month conversion. I can tell you, I'm already not impressed, because, um, they told us we were starting July one, we've started with the chart of accounts conversion. We've had no support with that, other than a tool to use and emails that don't get response, returned for three days. Um, but I, we, we have a team here working on that. Um, we got a schedule, our kickoff is now next week, but I got that email today, and, you know, I don't know what your lives are like, but a week's notice isn't really enough to pull a team together when we're already so busy, but we'll make it work. Um, so our kickoff is next week, um, but it's going to be a long process, and, and we'll know officially, you know, I'll know at the kickoff, but we'll be really starting the real work with the conversion, um, mid-August. Uh, so all the chart of account work is supposed to be helped happening first, um, this, over, over the next couple of weeks, which happens to coincide with the end of our fiscal year and the start of a new one, and total chaos, so that's great. Um, but, yeah, we'll do the best we can. We have a great team. I, I've, we've got, um, you know, we're going to set up a space just for this purpose, and we're going to do the best that we can.
Laura, where's the?
Question for Julie.
Uh, we'll start with Peter, hang on, Peter, then Don.
About that, uh, I was just wanting to ask Laura, where are the pressures coming from? Where, where this mandate is coming from?
Well, the state signed a contract a year ago, um, and they pushed, you know, they got so much pushback. The product that we're getting is not as good as the product that we already all have. But the intent, I think originally of this, all these rules that started was actually a request of VASBO. Are, am I a professional group of business managers that said, we really need a more uniform, uniform chart of accounts and accounting system? Um, because there isn't one, and we all interpret things differently, and we all kind of do things differently, because we've all developed our own rules, because there was not a lot of support from the state. Somehow, the state turned that into a whole new software system. They didn't involve the people, the actual users, and so this has been a battle that's been, we've been fighting for two years, but we're at the point now where some schools, we're in round six now, so there's been five rounds of smaller rounds, much smaller than the one we're in. Um, they, they're telling us they've made a lot of gains as far as the support that they'll give, but it's, it's nowhere near what it needs to be. It's, it's not a good situation, that's why I'm so hesitant. I mean, we can pull off a software conversion. It almost killed us last time, but we got it done, and it actually is a really great product, a couple of years ago when we switched to infinite vision. Um, this, it's like to know you're going to go through all of this, to have a product that's not as good as what you already have. Frustrating, uh, but it would eventually potentially save the district money if the state continues to pay for it. Right now, they're going to pay for it for a couple of years. Um, but for me, when it's something about managing a thirty-seven million dollar budget, functionality is really important, and right now, there's a lot of concerns about that. People, it, it, they've made a lot of gains though, so I'm going to go with that. Um, I just, I want the board, I've said this before, to be aware that it's, it's not great, and it's going to be hard, and we've been told that, and I've shared that, um, that the time demand, we will have some overtime, especially given our COVID situation, all my demands on me and other people in the office. Um, but, you know, we will do, we'll keep that at a minimum as we can, but it just stinks when you're, you're going to have to work so hard at something that isn't going to be better than what you are.
So we're all fixed in the same boat?
Yeah, yep, everyone has to convert their chart of accounts. We actually have to report on the chart of accounts, the new chart of accounts this year, it'll be the first time. I can tell you right now, that's not going to go well for anyone, um, but, but we'll be doing that. Uh, and then, yes, round six, I think it goes up to round eight, so I had asked if we could potentially do the COVID thing, just move back a little bit into a different round, but we were told no, they've sort of done it regionally, so. I won't be afraid to advocate for additional support or resources, though I can guarantee you that, I can be a real pain in the butt. And it's not my first rodeo, I've done this before, so we'll try to make it work, but.
Don.
So Julie, I know we have Becky Hart sixty percent time. Would there be, would there be a way to get Becky to maybe work more right now, who are under this crunch? With the understanding that, uh, she would work less as we get later into the year? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what Becky does, to be honest with you, but I would think that some of this certainly she should be knowledgeable about. She probably was involved when they first said it was a bad system to go with it or whatever.
Look, yes, I, without talking about employees and their, and their time, uh, she's certainly heavily involved, yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, not seeing any other discussion, so thank you, Laura, for that one. Uh, at this time, we're, we're on to future meeting dates. So as of right now, we have a meeting scheduled for July fourteenth, virtually at six-thirty, and then we also have another meeting scheduled for July twenty-first, virtually at six-thirty. So.
I, I did, I did want to ask the board, or at least have the board to think about. Um, one of the things that we're discussing in our steering committees and task force is about the use of the building. And we really cannot have visitors in our buildings, um, during the school year. Uh, and we're trying to shut down our buildings at a certain time, so that the custodians can clean for the students the next day. So I'm, you know, I want you to think about how we want to, I, I, we may want to continue, uh, virtually for a while, maybe have central office available and have some in person, and then, you know, but we want, we, it's going to be a challenge, uh, if we are having, um, you know, there's nine board members and then the administrators and so forth. That's a lot of people entering a building that we're really trying to seal off. Um, so I don't want an answer now, but I want you to think about, you know, we still have board members that want to be remote anyway. Um, maybe we, we move to a more hybrid as we get closer to school and not in a school.
Yay, okay. Uh, Terry. No, you're okay.
No, I was just thinking for Chris.
I know.
Uh, that's all right, uh.
It's not saying we can't do it. If it's important to the board, we'll make it happen. I just think it's important, uh, consideration.
Oh, definitely, I, uh, it's definitely worth a little extra effort on my part, now I have to clean buildings after us, makes total sense to me.
So how long do you foresee that being the case, where we can't go in the building?
Well, the guidance right now is that nobody goes into those buildings except students and staff. For, for the foreseeable future.
What, what is, I'm just trying to think about the future, especially athletics and stuff, if they're not going to let any, any people into the building.
Oh, well, there's, the Vermont Principles Association is working out guidance for athletics and for a slow rollout, and it depends on what stage we're in. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I couldn't answer that question right now, but certainly there will be, those considerations will be important.
I got, that brings up another question in my mind, and I don't need an answer now, I guess it's just something to think about, but how would be, how would, uh, like Highgate does the pre, um, parent teachers conference in August? I don't know if they're still doing it this year, but, uh, and then if this still in this way, when parent teachers conferences come, would they become a virtual conference at that point? Most likely, I guess.
I don't know the answer to that question, that's something that the team is looking at. Because, you know, we can't necessarily, um, that doesn't mean you can't have a parent in the building for a meeting. It doesn't mean that the first few days of school, you won't necessarily have kindergarten parents being able to walk children to school. It's just, there's a very tight screening process, but in general, we do not have visitors, we do not have anyone, uh, and everything has to be by appointment. Um, and only in the front office. So, you know, we, we want to be cognizant, if we're asking that of families, and then a bunch of us treats into the library in the evening time and impact the custodian, you know, I think we have to think of that. But definitely that parent teacher conference day is something that Highgate is working through.
Yep. Okay.
Chris?
Don.
Uh, thinking of places, and I, and I agree with everything Julie has said, but I think of the Highgate Library, doesn't it have an outside entrance where you don't have to come into the school?
The library, no.
No.
You, you, the Highgate Li, you mean the elementary library?
Yes.
No, they have a, they have a, uh, uh, fire escape door that actually doesn't work that great. It's part of the bond, it needs to be replaced.
Okay, no, I just wondered, I was thinking if we needed a school, that probably is the one that has a library on the perimeter, rather than being inside the school. But if the door doesn't work, then it won't work.
The, uh, I know the select board in Highgate, they've started having their meetings instead of at the municipal building, which is small. They have them in the arena, because everybody can spread out, but if the arena puts in ice, then that option goes away. Just another option, if we did want to have in-person meetings, not in the school, but then it's only in Highgate. I'm not sure what Swanton and Franklin's solution would be. Franklin, maybe the town hall, not sure, and Swanton. But I, I, at this point, I mean, I can get by doing the virtual meetings. It is nice, uh, when we're done, we're done, so.
I believe in Swanton, that the village office is big enough, if we could reserve it, for probably twenty, at least twenty people with individual tables. I'm not suggesting that we go there, but if we really decide we want to pursue a meeting like that, I think we could arrange with, uh, Reg Belvole and the people there to use it. It's a pretty good-sized space.
Right. Okay. Uh.
Chris, I, Chris, I have one other issue that, uh, before we get into the bu, uh, budget process, I would like to have a scheduled time. I know that Mike Dewey's mentioned it, uh, there, but we should take, and Laura, have Laura, Julie bring in the audit and review the audit. It's our audit, I think Mike said, you know, you really should know, even though you trust everybody, and we do. Uh, but to, so between now and when we start budget, I just would like to set aside a time on agenda to do that.
Yep.
Unless nobody else cares, and then I'll drop it.
Uh, nineteen audit, um, audits, completed audits that were the last separate audits that we would have before the merger are in the shared drive, um, from a previous meeting, uh, a couple of months ago, I think, but I could share those again. And I can tell you, we just scheduled our fiscal year twenty audit, which will be our first merged audit, um, for the last week in September.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the one that was done a year ago.
Yep. The night.
Before, before we merge, I think, I just think it's good people have a good understanding of where we were when we ended our individual schools.
Sure.
One of the things that we discussed, uh, that Don's referring to is the possibility of having the auditors come and present information to the board.
That's fine.
Right, you and I could talk about that, Laura.
They, they have offered multiple times when they find out, you know, a few months to come, but we'd love the opportunity to do that, yep, thank you.
No, I know we've discussed it before, but I don't, with everything else, I don't want it to get lost.
Okay. So, uh, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal property issues, or property legal issues. Uh, Terry's first, Steve's the second. Any discussion? I would say we'd invite in Julie. I don't believe we'd need Laura for this.
No.
Oh, just Julie and the board. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of entering executive session, raise your hand. Uh, motion carries seven-zero. So there's no action needed from our executive session, uh, unless anybody has another item to discuss, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Peter's first. Steve's the second. All those in favor of adjourning at eight-thirteen, raise your hand.
Uh.
We are adjourned, motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much, everybody, have a.